So it's time to start. We will come to order. We are now holding the Board of School Trustees Public Work Session. So will you join me in a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I still move.
Thank you, Ms. Kirchner. Do I address second?
I'll second then.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Our discussion item this evening is the 2016 budget, and our guest of honor is Ms. Tolle, so I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. At your place this evening is a black notebook with a copy of the budget and the mandatory state forms that will be presented for hearings in September, and then ultimately your approval in October, or hopefully your approval. Additionally, there's a copy of the PowerPoint with lines up by the side so you can make notes. What I try to do on this evening is provide a summary of the budget with some historical data in what I hope were, with some cute graphics. So anyhow, this evening, we're going to talk about the 2016 budget workshop. First of all, I'd like to talk about the revenue. Over 78% of the general fund revenue is based on student enrollment, that being basic support, which is the amount we get per full student. Kindergarteners this year are going to be counted as one if they take a full-day kindergarten class. In previous years, they've been counted as a half with a special full-day kindergarten grant. So they've eliminated the full-day kindergarten grant and count the kindergarteners as one. If you guys have any questions as I go through this, please don't hesitate to stop me. I want this to be an interactive discussion. The next piece of the funding formula is what's called the complexity index, and there was a change in that this last year also. Previously, they had taken our free and reduced lunch information from our textbook claim. However, now that is shifting to they're receiving the information from the Division of Family and Social Services each October, and the only students counted are those that receive SNAP, which is food assistance, or food stamps, or TANF. So we will be experiencing a decline in our complexity index.
What is that acronym for, Mrs. Tolle?
T-A-N-F.
T-A-N-F? It's an acronym for something?
Yeah, something assistance. I don't know. I printed that out the other day. I even looked at it. I can't tell you.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, so our complexity index is going to change because we're going to have fewer children included in that group because of the change in how they are determined.
Yep. Students qualify automatically if they're in, if they receive TANF or food stamp assistance.
Okay, so any family that gets food stamps gets free or reduced-priced lunch?
Yes. And TANF is you are, your poverty level is so high that you also receive cash.
Gotcha, okay.
It is, I believe TANF is only for children, and food stamps can be the entire family. When I read that, it was just yesterday I prepared that.
Okay.
It escapes me right now.
Does everybody who's eligible for food stamps, do all of those folks apply for free and reduced lunch?
They're automatically approved. We get an electronic transfer from the Division of Family Services, and we look, import that information into our food service software, and those kids are automatic. The additional population were the kids who were not signed up for the food stamp program or the TANF program and filled out the federal application for assistance. If we approved them, they previously were counted as students in that complexity index. They are no longer counted. So what we are doing locally is on any application that comes in, when food service sends them their letter notifying they do qualify or they don't qualify, they are also including a document that I prepared that talks about where they can go to sign up for food stamps and where they can go to sign up for TANF. So that will be provided with that, so hopefully we can get more of those people signing up for those services if they're eligible, which they would be if they qualify for free lunch.
So is this a continuing thing through the year? Because there have been instances, I know very specifically with some kids at the middle school, at the beginning of school year, they didn't need the food stamps and they didn't need the free or reduced-priced lunch. And then there were catastrophic things happen in the family, and they applied at that time. Does this, I guess, is this a...
The complexity index is the file that's transferred from Division of Family Services on October 1 of the previous year.
Okay.
So they are using last year's data for this year's complexity index. This year's October 1 file will determine what our complexity index is for next.
So there is, it's set at a particular date, so there's no flexibility in that at all?
No, the students will still be eligible for free lunch.
Okay.
But it will have no impact on our complexity.
Okay.
It's not fluid. I wondered the same thing.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Taylor, I didn't have a chance to look at it. It's that T, it's temporary assistance for needy families, T-A-N-F.
Yeah.
Is that right?
And it's cash.
Yes.
To provide, not dollar-bill cash, but...
Money.
Provide them funds for things other than food.
Thanks, Steve.
That's for rent utilities, those types of things.
Essentials.
Yeah. And special education is another for student funding, career and technical programs. And then again, there's no more full-day kindergarten grant. Here's a chart where we compare. In 2016, you'll see that we are receiving an increase of $390 in the basic grant amount. The academic honors has been $1,000 per student previously. This year, they're giving us $1,000 for a paid-lunch student and $1,400 for a free-or-reduced-lunch They have done, finally done, some increase in the special education funding. The severe disabilities is going from $8,350 to $8,800. A $35 increase in mild and moderate disabilities. They are reducing communication disabilities in preschools remaining the same.
What is the communication?
Speech.
Speech.
Oh, okay.
Speech and hearing.
Speech and hearing, okay.
Career and technical funding is based on the counts of the students in those programs. It is weighted by the labor market need and wage, and also by the number of hours the student is in class. Full-day kindergarten has been eliminated. Last year, we received, our complexity index formula was 33.15% of the 4587, which is the basic grant amount, or $1,502 per student. This year will be at 33.3% of their cap for the complexity, which is 3489. So our complexity index per student will be dropping to $1,161.84 per student.
I have, when you say the basic grant, that's the basic for all students. We receive for all students, right?
That's correct. That's the basic amount of every student around the state of Indiana. This school's received for every student around the state of Indiana.
For some reason, I thought that was around $6,000.
It's when you add the complexity index and the basic grant, that's what we talk about it being, about $6,000 per student. You consider those two items together. Here's a pictorial of our membership and where we've been. Now, until the estimate for 2016, kindergarteners were counted as a half. I use 3,430 students in my formula. As of today, we think that may be between 40 and 50 higher than what I estimated. So I'm hoping they stay around through camp day. It's always tricky tying up the number at the high school, so I'm reluctant to go too far out. I use this number for the fall estimate and the spring. As you will see in all of the pictures, or for the past two years, we always see a decline between the fall and the spring enrollment. So even though we may have 50 more students, we may be down 75 by the time we get to the February camp.
Didn't you bring that up at an earlier meeting, that we didn't need to worry so much about physically about that, because we had so many kids that were graduating at midterm, and that took, those kids would not have been counted in the second semester, so that accounted for some of the losses at the high school?
Well, it does. Suspicions or expulsions.
Suspicions, expulsions, and early grads.
Home school, early grads, yeah. So there are a number of things that play into that. Also, we have people leaving our community.
Yeah.
We have families leaving our community, as you see the decline in enrollment from fall to fall.
Yeah, it's decline in general population.
Yes. Here's a pictorial of our estimated revenues. If you look back in 2009, we received $24,500 in general funding, general fund from the state, and we received $2.4 million in stimulus money. We are now down to an estimate of $23,800 in general fund revenue coming in for 2016. Some of the general fund operating expenses, these are, these are the operating expenses of the school corporation, except student transportation, which is handled through the transportation fund. In general, 87% to 91% of the school corporation's expenses will be salary and fringe benefits, whereby we hired PTs, OTs, psychologists, and those amounts would have been in salary previously. You're now seeing our contracted services go up because we're having to contract for those instead of being able to hire those people ourselves. Here is our pictorial of our salary and benefits. So for 2015, we're looking at 61.81% for salary and 26% for benefits. In 2016, we're looking at 61, just under 62% for salary and just over 25% for fringe benefit cost. As, as we've discussed previously, our health insurance costs have, our increases have really been very low, and our health insurance is fairly stabilized, so that is really helping the corporation on the benefits side. The history of our expenditures, in 2016, we're proposing a general fund expenditures of $25,857,000, which is up slightly from last year's, this 2015 proposed of just under $25,500. But we have had a steady decline since 2009, with a little bit higher in 2014. One of the items that we talk about annually is our assessed valuation, because it is important to our taxing funds. We had experienced some growth in the assessed valuation last year to $701 million. A large part of the growth has come about from the value placed on farm acreage. They have put a moratorium on any increase in the assessed value per acre for 2015 paid 2016. So in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see that that amount is remaining the same as $2,050 per acre. They are revisiting the whole assessment process for farm acreage and the formula that has been utilized for years. So it's basically, they're taking the year off and holding steady with 2014's amount. There's a picture of our assessed valuation. The debt service fund is our first taxing fund. We have long-term debt, QSCAB of 2013, the first payment coincided with the retirement of lease rental of 2008. The final payment will be in December of 2017. So in the next year, we will be looking at our building and our property needs for a potential bond issue to roll debt on when this debt rolls off, thereby keeping our debt consistent and our tax rates in total fairly consistent, so we don't have an impact to the other taxing units. We have a common school loan for technology with the final payment being in December of 2019. We have the QSCAB of 2009, final payment in December of 2020, and the CMS lease rental, which does not pay off until December of 2026.
What is that? What's a CMS lease rental?
It was the middle school bond issue for all the work that was done there. It had a long...
Okay, because I was there during that time. That was in, oh, 2002, 2003, and that...
Somewhere, five or six, somewhere.
Yeah.
Four, five. It was just before I got here.
Yeah, it was...
It had like 20 or 25 payment schedules, which is not very common today.
Okay.
They're much shorter.
Okay. I just was curious, because that was a huge, 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 huge...
It sure was.
Project.
Yeah. You, for any one location now, if you wish to issue bonds, those bonds cannot exceed $2 million, or you have to go through the petition or bond issuance process.
Okay.
So projects of that scale at one location just aren't likely to happen.
Aren't likely to happen.
Yeah. In addition, the debt service, the state unreimbursed textbook amount increased from last year, $16,945, for a total of $75,476. We include temporary loan interest just in case taxes would not be distributed on time, then we would be able to borrow cash should we need it for cash flow. If it's not used, it just rolls back to reduce the levy the next year. We do have administrative fees of about $2,500 that are charged to the debt service fund related to our bond issues, and some mandatory reporting that is required in administration and the distribution of the bond funds. So for 2016, the debt service appropriation is just to touch over $1.9 million.
Is most of that debt service coming from the bond of the CMS lease rentals? Is that where most of that money is coming from?
No, it is from all of the bonds that are listed there. All of those debt items make that up, that $1.9 million.
Okay, so when, and I'm exposing my ignorance here, because I've not done with this kind of stuff before, but so when we, when this, a long-term debt is, final payment is December 2017, the other one 2019, 2020, so in the next four years, we are going to retire some debt, so our debt service then will, would go down appropriately? Or will it...
Well, my recommendation to the finance committee and the board will be, as you have debt roll off, you look at our, our infrastructure needs, and we issue bonds to keep that debt consistent.
Okay.
Because of the circuit breaker, we're not collecting all of the money that we would anyhow, which reduces our CPF fund significantly. What this allows you to do is keep your debt, our debt, the same, and then we don't have ours roll off. The city and the county start collecting more money, then we issue bonds two years later, and we hurt them because they've grown into this new income they've received. So if we all play by the same rules and try and not issue debt until we have debt roll off, we'll keep things fairly consistent.
And it's good to have some debt. And it's good to have some debt.
Well, quite honestly, with the capital projects fund being what it is and the age of our buildings, it will be the only way we'll be able to make major improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
This shows our debt, debt service, the pictorial, the high year of 2014, $20,240,000. Pension debt. The pension debt requires a levy neutrality, so whatever we need to assess for pension debt, I have to reduce the transportation fund, the bus replacement fund, or the capital projects fund, thereby we are not impacting the taxpayers for the debt. We are, we have to make the election to reduce the other funds. In 2013, we had to neutralize 25%. That has now grown to 100% for 2016 and beyond. Now, we refinanced the debt a couple of years ago in 2013 for an $87,000 savings over the life of the loan. At that time, we made the election to push all of that savings into the last years, because that's where we were paying the highest interest on the originally issued bonds. So our semi-annual payments of $107,500 will be dropping to $97,000 per year, and that also helps us on that levy neutrality, because we will not have as much to neutralize. These pay off in January 2019. This would be a debt that would roll off, that we would not add another debt, because it does require levy neutrality right now. The capital projects fund is the fund we use to purchase equipment, technology improvements, and staff, building improvements, maintenance of equipment, lease obligations for copiers, and the maintenance agreement for those. Up to 5% of the levy can be used for sports facilities, and you may add a factor from the 2005 calendar year distribution for property tax, for property insurance or utilities. We do use that factor for utilities. Our rate recalculated last year is .4111. It is recalculated every year. I am hoping to see that rate go up, because the Department of Local Government Finance had a challenge on how they were recalculating those, and I think schools are expected to see a slight increase in that rate. Capital projects fund, our utility allocation is $847,000. The 5% for sports facility is about $150,000. The finance committee participated in meetings with all of the principals and directors and maintenance supervisor to discuss the request. In your notebook is a summary of what the principals requested, and then the items that we chose to allocate for this year. You will find it in the capital project section, which is the thickest section in the notebook. The transportation fund is for all of the operating costs of transporting your children. Annually, the state has a formula that they use to calculate how much we can increase our levy over the previous year. So for all school corporations, that increase was, is allowed to be at 2.6%. Our transportation fund has helped us out with transfers to the rainy day fund in the past. I'm hoping that we will continue to see that availability, because that helps support our payments for some severance benefits, for some technology, and that sort of thing. We'll talk about the rainy day fund last. The bus replacement fund, it allows for the purchase of buses and mini-buses. It is a 12-year plan, meaning that each bus fits into that for replacement every 12 years. School buses cannot be purchased from the transportation or the general fund. It must come from the bus replacement fund. Bus replacement fund, in 2012, the Department of Local Government Finance changed the methodology for calculating the bus replacement. Previously, you put on there what your need was, and that, that's what went through the budgeting process. They, they changed this, and they took our total bus fleet and what the replacement cost of those were at that time by classification of bus and divided by 12. And so our levy was set at $424,000. Each year, we get to add that percentage factor that they allow for their inflation to that. What this forces us to do is levy more money than what we really need in certain years to build up a cash balance, so in the years that we have more buses to replace, we have the cash available. That's the cycle we're in right now. So in 2016, we are asking for more money than we need, but in 2017 through 2019, our need exceeds the $424,000. So basically, it's, we are in a savings plan. We're building up cash into our bus replacement fund, so when we get to 2017, we can replace the seven buses that we need instead of the four that were, because we don't replace, we didn't buy our buses an equal amount every 12 years. Some years, we bought none, and some years, we bought seven or eight, so...
This allows you to keep the, have funds available in the year. We only need two buses this year, but we know in 2017, we're going to need five, then we apply for, we keep the funds that we would have had for the...
Yes. If we don't levy at the maximum, we will not have money in 2017 to purchase all of the buses we need. So you need to be at that maximum levy on those years, so you have those cash reserves.
Because didn't we purchase two buses this year? I remember Jane was here, was talking about, she was very pleased with...
Did we get two or one this year on last year's contracted rate?
At least one.
And I think it was a head start, a small bus.
Yes, it was.
We only bought one this year, and I think we bought two.
Because she was very pleased with the price of the bus at that particular time.
Rainy day fund is the last fund, and it is subject to the same appropriation process as all of the other funds, but it does not receive any tax money. The rainy day fund is established and maintained with monies that we transfer into that fund. It cannot exceed 10% of any fiscal year's budget, and you cannot transfer debt service funds into the rainy day fund. We use ours to help with bridge payments, technology staff, circuit breaker impact to capital projects. If you do not levy the rainy day fund as a part of the budgeting process, then you have to go through the additional appropriation process, and you have the added expense of all of the advertisements that go along... that go along with the additional appropriation process. So we always try and take care of allocations from rainy day for the, just in case, as a part of our annual budgeting. And that's all I have for the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or any specifics.
Okay, I'm, I'm confused a little bit on the rainy day fund. I, I get the general idea of it, but can you give me an example of some places we have used money from a rainy day fund?
Sure, Spark Gold Floor. Everton Roof. We refinanced some bonds and we put that money aside. The board designated it as specifically for the use of Everton. That's when we thought we might be adding on to Everton. We did not, but Everton needed a roof. Also, we have used it to make bridge payments to our retirees, thereby freeing up general fund monies to help support our general fund classrooms, general fund funded classrooms, if you will. We also are paying our technology director out of it right now because we ran out of E-Rate money, E-Rate funding money. Now, we will be receiving distributions for the first half of the year shortly, so we'll take him back to that E-Rate funded. So the board has approved some technology staff as a part of the rainy day fund. We talked in terms of part-time staff. However, we are able to find part-time staff and with the, the growth in our computers and our software, we may need to be considering some additional full-time staff to support these initiatives.
Okay, another question. Can funds from the rainy day fund be used for, for lack of a better, staff raises, whether they be support staffs or our teachers, our teacher salaries? Or is that just something that's just not done? And again, I, I don't know.
It has not been done in the past. We have tried to live within our means of your general fund.
Yeah, it's, one way to look at it, it's like a savings account.
Oh, yeah.
And if you start paying ongoing expenses out of a savings account, when it's gone, how do you replenish that?
Exactly.
And so we've looked at it as more, and we do have a couple salaries in there, but, but basically, we've looked at it as one-time expenses. How do we, how do we manage that? I think when we established the rainy day fund, I think you said we could spend it for general fund expenditure. So anything that we spend general fund money, in theory, we could spend rainy day fund. But I think, as you see, that the history of our, of our revenue, I think we have to be very prudent and judicious as how we use that rainy day fund.
No, I, I would, I would agree. I would agree on that.
Anybody have, if I stood, Mark, what? Jane, very good, thank you for...
Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Since this is a discussion item, there is no action to be taken, so no further comment. I need a motion that we adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
I'll save this, thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries and we are adjourned.